Appreciate everybody showing up this afternoon. All righty. Can y'all hear me now?
I already texted.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
The mayor is running a few minutes late, so he asked me to go ahead and get the meeting called to order, and so I will do that at 1:00. Well, I guess we did start on time at 1:00 P. M. Mr. Manager, I'm going to turn it over to you for this budget update.
Thank you, sir. We've got two items on the agenda today. As you mentioned, it'll begin with a budget update. This will include a second quarter budget update as we do through every cycle. We check in, as we all well know now, we have 14 funds that make up the city's budget, and so we check in on those, on the progress, how things are going. We'll share that information today, as well as a discussion about the development of next year's budget, so fiscal year '25 budget, you know, what our early projections are, the assumptions that we're making, and get your feedback.
Okay.
As it relates to the budget, we're also asking you to take action to allow me or my designate to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with Leon County for the use of their legal notice platform. This comes about by last legislative session, which state law changed, and it allows counties in the municipalities within counties to use a different form of legal notice that's more accessible and cheaper to administer. We'll ask you to take that action as well.
All right.
With that, I'll turn it over to Robert for the presentation.
Hey, Robert.
Hello, Commissioner's. Thank you, City Manager Goode, appointed officials, members of the public. As the city manager mentioned, it's our routine, multiple times per year, check-in. We like to look at the current status of the budget and then look forward to how that may affect our plans for the upcoming budget. With this agenda item, we've got certain goals in mind. Talk about some of the fiscal year '24 budget highlights, review those, provide a second-quarter budget status update. We want to address any budget development updates that we have at this time for fiscal year '25, as well as considering the capital improvement plan for fiscal year '25 through '29 that we'll work to adopt in September. As mentioned, there are two recommended actions, accepting the report and then authorizing the city manager on legal notices. In fiscal year, some of the key highlights from fiscal year '24 to set the stage for where we are with our current budget. We invested in new officers, technology, higher wages, plus continued support for Tempo Team, TIFLA, which is a $19.2 million investment in community safety initiatives. Those two efforts address violent crime, but also then generational change, programs that impact generational change. I'll also point out that we invested $3.8 million in human service programs, proven track record of success, more than 80 different agencies use that money to get matching state and federal monies, and we've reported in the past more than $200 million in extra effort beyond what we and Leon County invest in. We continue to leverage more than $18 million to address affordable housing. That's more affordable housing in the pipeline than the last 25 years combined. So considering the strategic plan by your direction, future budget assumptions, and the impact to the community, we also evaluate our current budget process and progress. This should be a familiar display of the 14 operating funds. We have different metrics that we look at. We look at key drivers in those respective funds, how revenues are being realized, where rates have been set, and the resulting income that's coming in. We look at expenditures in each of the various funds, and at this time, as we look at those, we evaluate whether or not we should be taking any actions on those 14 funds. In our estimation and our analysis by the resource management analyst and the departments, 13 of the 14 funds are coded green to indicate that they'll be within budget by fiscal year end, which is promising. You'll remember when certain legislative proposals were in place, we wanted to monitor those impacts on water and sewer, and so we've moved those as that legislation did not pass. We do have one fund, and this is consistent with the first quarter, that's in yellow, and that yellow indicates that there's monitoring that we're doing. Star Metro has on-demand dial-a-ride growth based on what our experiences during COVID. It's outpacing some of the fixed route ridership, and so we're working with Star Metro so that we can see how we can fully recover and then provide those services in the most efficient and effective manner. And those fixed route designs will be reviewed, particularly as we enter into integrating the South Side Transit Center.
All right.
As you all know, the legislative session has ended. Leave a moment there for basking in the glory of that. Fortunately for us, there were, fortunately, unfortunately, there are quite a few items that addressed how we provide services in the community. They would have affected the revenues that we have in order to provide general fund services and our utility services. Just in a quick overview, there was a joint resolution that did pass. It allows on the second $25,000 of homesteaded property an exemption. That exemption, if approved by electors in November, would take effect January 1st of 2025. What we've provided here is an estimate based on current tax rolls of what that additional exemption may result in as an impact to our general fund. In the first year, in fiscal year '26, it's about $154,000 impact. Unfortunately, the impact is then cumulative over the five-year period, and we're looking at nearly $2.5 million in impact by fiscal year 2030. There are some assumptions that we make. We're using the current tax roll. That tax roll may change, property values may change. Ideally, the constitutional amendment may not pass, and then we've also got an assumption about CPI of 5% per year. I will point out that while this is a benefit to certain households, there would be no benefit to non-homesteaded property or to commercial and businesses. The House bill I mentioned that also passed, 275, I mentioned that because it does affect our utilities, protecting critical infrastructure, and does go into effect in July of 2024. So that was a clear trend in 2024. You know, we closely monitored those bills, we communicated with lobbyists, we kept in contact with trade associations. We're going to keep an awareness as we move forward into the next legislative session and into fiscal year '25 and '26. I won't go into detail on some of the legislation that did fail, but we'll continue to communicate and foster the sense that when there's effects on our revenue streams, it then affects our ability to provide fair and equitable services to our community as directed, you know, by the commission and by the community expectations. As we move through fiscal year '24 and the 14 operating funds' current status, as we maybe breathe the sigh of relief from some of the legislation that did not pass, we also reference the strategic plan again, and we bring forward some fiscal year '25 budget assumptions. As you indicated in your last meeting, human service funding is a priority, and we wanted to set the stage that funding's allocated on a two-year cycle, and fiscal year '24 is that second year of that current two-year funding cycle. I'll mention that in fiscal year '24, $3.8 million of city funding and $2.3 million of county funding are distributed to agencies. Will have been distributed to agencies sourced mainly from general funds, but also a one-time supplemental appropriation from our American Rescue Plan funds from the federal government. And so that total that we have in fiscal year '24 is $6.1 million. The fiscal year '25 and '26 cycle, the process actually began in March of 2024 with applicant workshops conducted by Housing and Community Resilience, and they recognize that ARPA revenue will be exhausted. So what we'll primarily have for funding in fiscal year '25 is general fund contributions to CHSP at the existing level to continue to invest in those critical programs. I think, you know, we've all recognized over this four-year period that those ARPA funds would end in December of this year, and so have been planning and speaking ahead of that issue. Leon County signaled, you know, as alternatives, Leon County signaled that they were willing to explore a partnership with the Children's Services Council, but not until the next cycle. That partnership would aim to enhance coordination and capacity in human service program funding, and it'd be similar to a three-partner agreement model that we had in place with United Way in the past, and so we would look to that effort as we move forward with CHSP funding. Another key assumption, as we work our way through the fiscal year '25 budget development, it addresses our most valuable resource, our staff. They are the engine that achieves our strategic plan objectives. We had discussed a personnel cost raise, and we're recommending a 4.2% raise for general employees, and then that would include a guaranteed $1,500 salary increase for all employees. We recognize that healthcare rates are probably going to increase. We don't get a contract and agreement until late August and September, but in an abundance of caution, we've identified that those healthcare costs are expected to be at about 7% as an increase. I will say that as we've gone through the fiscal year, recognizing inflation and impact on salaries, we've transitioned the average share of healthcare. You've directed us to share the health plan costs for employees from 30% of the cost to 20% of the cost. That saves family plan owners or recipients about $3,600 annually, and that doesn't reflect the addition to flex bucks that was also provided in fiscal year '23. That was about a 9% increase, and that allows employees to choose a cafeteria of different options, insurance plans, and dental, additional dental, and vision, and things like that. A vital piece of our key assumptions is debt service. With the bicentennial and key projects moving forward that you're very familiar with, South Side Transit Center, TPD headquarters, the senior center, parks in the Orange Avenue area and Market District, they're all slated for completion in fiscal year '25. In order to pay for those projects, we use a financing method of selling municipal bonds. Those are detailed in the April 10th City Commission Agenda that's before you this afternoon. The first of those is approval of Resolution 24-R-11, authorizing issuance of not exceeding $70 million Florida, of City of Tallahassee, Florida capital bonds. This is a vehicle for providing infrastructure primarily. It includes buildings, roads, energy improvements are examples of the items that are in that agenda item. We also have a request to approve Resolution 24-R-12. That's authorizing issuance of public improvement revenue note, Series 2024, in an amount not to exceed $25 million. That's entirely for payment for the senior center. This debt service strategy, as we look at it, it keeps debt service consistent over time. With these new issuances in 2024 and 2025, it maintains budget stability. Since 2009, we've been consistent in what we've paid in debt service. As we pay off principal and interest for loans that are 30- and 15-year loans, and that debt service rolls off what we pay out of the general fund in our general government bonds, we then layer in additional debt to replace, upgrade, and build new infrastructure. And so this process is working with the treasurer clerk, with bond counsel, financial advisors, rating agencies, and so we time the debt payments to be consistent with repayment for these large infrastructure project, so that as these debt payments are retired or refinanced, we can undertake paying on for new facilities. And the time period represents either the pledge that we've made, for example, in the case of the blueprint dollars, the pledge is for 15 years, and otherwise, it's over the lifespan of the building or structure, typically a 25- or 30-year period that we're repaying the loans. Another key assumption, as we move forward in developing our fiscal year '25 budget, is our general fund budget estimate. We are estimating a shortfall in the general fund. We don't believe it's a cause for alarm or immediate action, but the information that we get on what the expenses are, where inflation is, what we're estimating for raises and pension and healthcare, the revenues lag that information, and so we've always got a, you know, a difference in what we're looking at. One major assumption that we are making, though, that's important, is that with this shortfall, we are not recommending a change in the millet rate. We did that last year with a larger deficit, but it was to address a specific public safety priority. And so with anemic revenues, with many of the revenues coming in in August and September and becoming clearer, as you direct us, we sharpen the pencil if those revenues don't come in, so that we can balance the general fund, but it is something that we want to be aware of as we move through these summer months. Narrowing this deficit, you know, it requires monitoring revenues closely, but it also then continues to get information on the significant increases. There's a couple areas. As we develop the budget, we know that personnel are the most important factor in our budget, nearly 80% of what we spend in the operating budget, and so we load the personnel that are in place and do that on a routine basis over time to make sure that we're keeping up with that cost. We have cost drivers then that are attached to those, each dollar of the personnel, and that then identifies what expense those dollars carry. In this case, you know, the increases that I mentioned earlier, there's an estimated increase in healthcare costs, so we're estimating about a $1.5 million increase tied to that 7% expectation, and then based on actuarial studies, we're estimating a $755,000 increase in pension cost in the general fund. After looking at personnel costs, we then look at other partnerships that we have. We know that with Star Metro, the general fund transfers monies to support those operations, and with the departure of ARPA funding that Star Metro had, we drew those numbers back for a short period of time, and we're recognizing that in fiscal year '25, we'll need to increase the transfer to Star Metro to $1.2 million to return to the service levels that preceded the pandemic fiscal year '21 amounts. The last piece of the puzzle, besides personnel and partnerships and costs that we share with others, is operating costs. We do expect to see an increase in utility costs, like the community, we pay for our utilities in our facilities, and then we expect an increase in other transfers, and mostly that is the shared cost that we have with the consolidated dispatch agency that we share with Leon County. So since the first workshop, we've identified specific cost drivers. These are early indicators of the budget balancing. We load the personnel costs, update that routinely. We'll continue to work through revenues as we receive them from the property appraiser, from the state, and then, and we have a June workshop to bring an update on the general fund estimate. As we develop the fiscal year '25 budget, there are some other assumptions that we're maintaining, our investments that we mentioned earlier that were established in prior years and continued in fiscal year '24. Those investments in public safety are commission priorities, and we'll continue to invest in those proactive, systematic, long-term solutions of Tempo and TIFLA and TEAM. The fiscal year '25 budget assumes these programs will be maintained at current service levels, about $7.9 million in expenses for Neighborhood First, Tempo, gun violence mitigation, so on and so forth, that are shown in that table. I'll note that the Real-Time Crime Center, the number as you go across is decreasing, but that reflects some of the startup costs that, after the center was stood up, aren't continuing. Those were one-time, non-recurring costs. As the city manager mentioned, one of the action items that we'll ask of you is to provide us an opportunity to change how we address legal notices. The 2003 statute directed how governmental agencies could advertise legally for permits and other publicly noticed requirements. The total amount that we've spent on advertising in the Democrat primarily was $200,000 in the last three fiscal years. We recognize that just a portion of this money was used to comply with statutory requirements. Leon County has proposed an even split of the $25,000 annual cost of them providing an online platform for this kind of advertising, and so we're asking that the city be able to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with the county. The city's share would be $12,500 annually, and we believe this would result in a savings of $25,000 for the city, $50,000 for Leon County, and the city together. We've also, as part of the key assumptions, have a capital improvement plan update. You'll notice a list of the upcoming process, upcoming process with the International Passenger Processing Facility, an $18 million effort that supports the nearly $1 billion strategic plan target for the airport. The Tallahassee Police Department Headquarters addresses the Northwood Center. As you well know, we've made great progress in demolishing and then preparing the grounds for construction of the TPD headquarters. We know that's about seven acres of the 29 acres, and so quite a bit of that parcel is ready for those next steps. The Fire Station 17 at Lake Bradford Road is in the design phase. The senior center, as we mentioned earlier, has bonds that are being released so that construction can begin. The South Side Transit Center, again, a great story with this is that Transit Center is supported by federal dollars, and so allows us to build a state-of-the-art facility that has come to be expected. The Orange Avenue Park and Market District Parks are part of our 100-year park goal for this coming year, and then water and sewer infrastructure, pump station upgrades, water and sewer upgrades, and then the Capital Circle, Forest Main. Both that pump station, I believe that provides about 30% of our capacity, and so it's a critical station, and then the same thing with the Capital Circle, Southeast Forest Main, nearly 40% of what we treat passes through that area. Looking ahead, with these long-term capital plans, with debt service consistency, with legal notice cost savings, reaffirming that even though we have a general fund deficit, there won't be a change in the millet rate. We ask that we balance the budget with salary and healthcare and pension cost considerations that we presented, and that we'll work to resolve that budget deficit in the next few months as we work through the rest of the spring and the summer months. Looking ahead, we've got a few meetings scheduled and a few key dates. Our next budget workshop is June 12th. By that point, we'll know some preliminary property tax valuation to bring back those results. We'll also, at that budget workshop, bring back a third-quarter update and recommend approval of a tentative millet rate with no change. We'll get certified property valuation on July 1st to finalize those revenues, and then adopt the budget September 11th and September 25th in two public hearings at your regular commission meeting. Again, as mentioned earlier, we're asking you to, we're, staff's recommending option one and option two be adopted. One is accepting the second-quarter budget update and providing additional direction for the '25 fiscal year budget, and then also authorizing the city manager or his designate to negotiate and enter into a cost-sharing agreement with Leon County for use of their legal notice advertising platform. With that, I'll stand ready to answer any questions or move to the next steps that you direct us to.
Thank you, Robert. Wonderful presentation. Are there any questions? Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Robert. For the legal notices, can you clarify for me, would that be replacing the legal notices that we contract with other, you know, papers in print? Would that be replacing, or would that be in addition to? What would that look like?
Yes, so any legal notices that we currently publish in, primarily it's in the Tallahassee Democrat, would now be organized and published on the Leon County website.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Matlow.
I think, is that the conclusion of the budget presentation? Yeah, I had a few questions on. We're six months into this fiscal year, six months away from adoption, and we're still projecting a budget deficit. There's a lot of assumptions that have been made in this budget about salary increases and those sorts of things that are being presented. My first question is, why are we starting from a place of a deficit, adding increases, and not starting from a place of a balanced budget? And if we discover additional revenue as it becomes available, adjusting upward from there?
Well, based on direction that we receive and priorities in the strategic plan, we build from the service levels that we've provided in the past. Those service levels have a certain amount of staffing. That staffing allows us to provide those general fund services, parks and recreation, public infrastructure, TPD, and so rather than estimating changes to that, we maintain those service levels as directed in the strategic plan, and so that's the majority of the costs that we're looking at when we build the budget.
Okay. Where does the 4.2% recommended across the board pay increase come from?
That's a combination of where we have been in the past with raises, where that's brought, employees that are paid the least in our workforce, where the market is for the professionals that we pay, and so that 4.2% also is very similar to where we are with the unions.
Okay, so the employees that we pay the least are part-time, hourly employees, correct?
The 4.2% that we speak to is for all our full-time and OPS employees.
It doesn't include...
Part-time and full-time employees would be at the $17 an hour wage that we've arrived at after making increases in the past few years.
Okay, we have this conversation every year, so the employees I'm referring to are kind of the part-time summer employees, you know... You know, they, they've been put into different categories, but they're employed by the city of Tallahassee, and they make an hourly rate at the state minimum wage of $13 an hour?
So, we've, we've moved beyond that minimum wage. Most of those employees that you're referencing make $17 an hour.
Okay. And what is the increase recommended for them today?
The departments have the ability to make the decision based on performance and, and the work that they're doing to reflect that 4.2% raise on that $17 an hour.
Okay.
And/or where they're brought in at entry level.
So, it's guaranteed to be 4.2% for anybody employed with the city of Tallahassee?
It's guaranteed for all full-time and OPS employees.
So, not, not every employee?
With a $1,500 minimum, that's more than the 4.2% for, for 90 of our employees, I would say.
Okay. Do you know what raise was offered in the current fire negotiations for lieutenants at the fire department?
Yes, I do. You're, you're asking for what we, as a city, offered?
Correct.
Yes. I do know that.
What was that raise?
Is it appropriate for us to talk about that as part of a, outside of the negotiation process?
Are you talking about the current negotiation or the...
Our most recent offer on the one-year contract for '24.
I mean, I think it's a matter of public knowledge.
Okay.
Okay. Robert?
So, which, which class of employees were you asking about?
Lieutenants.
Lieutenants. Sorry, I'm starting to get into the sections. Max, which is it? One more. So, the lieutenants' offer was, is that right? 1%.
1% in salary increase?
Yes.
Okay. And what was the offer for chiefs or battalion chiefs?
Make sure, so we're talking about the compensation. So, the, the contract offer is a little more complicated than we do generally with employees. It was a 2.5% reduction in contribution to payroll, which was the base.
True.
And then, there was, there were other details dependent upon the rank. So, we need to make sure we're clear on that.
For clarification, Mr. Mayor, my question is specifically on the salary increase. I'm not concerned with, you know, we can talk about pensions and additional benefits, and I understand that those exist, but I'm particularly talking about the across-the-board offer for salary increase.
Mr. Mayor, understand, I just want to make sure the record, Mr. Mayor Protem, thank you, want to make sure we're clear. In, in the contract negotiations, the one-year contract negotiation, it includes a reduction in the contribution to pension, which is tantamount to a raise. It does matter in the future, and so, we just want to make sure everybody's operating with the same information. Thank you.
Did you have that number for battalion chiefs and chiefs?
It looks, I must not have it right here. So, I apologize. Here it is. Firefighters is a 4% across the, across-the-board increase, 2.5% pension contribution reduction with $1,000 cash bonus. Engineers are 5.6% total value. It's 1.5% across-the-board, 2.5% pension, $1,000 cash bonus. Lieutenants is 3.2% total value with a 2.5% pension contribution reduction and a $500 cash bonus. And so, again, the, that's a total value of what they'll receive. And then, captain and battalion chiefs are 3% total value with a 2.5% pension contribution reduction and a $500 cash bonus.
Okay. So, across the board, that's 1% for lieutenants, and that's 0% for battalion chiefs and captains. On the, the pay increase that you're, you're recommending in the budget that's leading to a deficit, does that 4.2% include across-the-board, that's a, that's a city manager, that's assistant city managers, everybody included?
Yes.
Okay. So, there's a assumption that there's a 4.2% raise at the top. So, if you're making $272,000 a year, you're going to receive 11,000-plus pay raise. If you're making $248,000 a year, you're going to receive an $11,000 pay raise. You had a similar pay raise, I believe, more the previous year, and the previous year, and the previous year. So, we're looking upwards of $40,000 in pay raises over the course of four years. And at the same time, we're saying we just got to $17 for the people at the bottom, and they're being offered $1,500. There's a, there's a huge pay imbalance at the city of Tallahassee. There's a huge imbalance of what people are being compensated and what it takes to survive in our community. The people feeling the most pressure, the economic pressure from inflation, from raising housing costs, they're not sitting, seated at this table. We're, we're not looking out for the people who make the most. Even if you're a full-time employee making $50,000 a year, why is it fair that you get a 4.2% increase and management also gets a 4.2% increase? When we look at dollars and cents, that's tens of thousands of dollars more. So, we're not looking at really the need, and then we're drawing a huge line in the sand against the fire department for, for unknown reasons, and we're just seeing drastic effects on our community. So, as this balanced budget, have we looked at as it relates to the fire department? You know, we've been told that the one-year was a bridge contract, and we'd see significant increases likely in a three-year. You know, it's my, my view that we need to be looking at a $60,000 base pay at the fire department, consistent with the police department. So, have we gotten that far to see, as we get further down fire negotiations, how we're going to pay for it? Or are we going to be trying to catch up at the end of a, are we trying to get through contract negotiations and then try to fit it into the budget? Are we being proactive in how much will be available for a future fire contract?
Mayor Protem, point of order.
Commissioner William Scotts.
Madam Attorney, should we be having these levels of detailed conversations regarding potential or ongoing negotiations with the labor union?
So, as, as I've recommended before, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, you know, because the negotiations are at impasse, and that's a pending, still a pending decision, I would recommend that you not have detailed discussions. I mean, I did say that the, the information that Commissioner Matlow requested, as far as the numbers, is a matter of public knowledge. So, but I do recommend that you not have continued discussions about the negotiations that are, especially the ones that are at impasse.
And for, for point of clarification, I've moved on from the 2024 fiscal year. We're in the 2025 fiscal year. The three-year contract negotiations will have budgetary impacts in 2025, I believe. So, my question is, are we going to be behind, or are we anticipating? We, we haven't had an, an update from, from management on, on where those contracts may be headed, so I have no idea what the fiscal impact may be, but I'm just trying to figure out the process. Are we going to get through those and then try to fit it into the budget? Or do we need to be proactive and see where our budget may be able to expand to anticipate some of those increases?
Again, Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Matlow, I think you're, you're comparing apples and oranges. The firefighters are paid out of the fire services fee. What we're talking about here today is our city general budget, which are two different things. So, I, I, I don't know, you're, you're asking questions that cannot be answered today unless you're, have some premonition about what's going to happen in the future and what will need to happen with the fire services fee to pay for the kind of raises that you're talking about. We don't have that information currently.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. And that, that's my question. I mean, we, we have to have that conversation sooner or later. I don't believe it requires an increase, as we, we may be able to look for general revenue funds to support fire services as well. But it seems to be, I, the question is just, is any increase or this contract negotiation contemplated at all in budget assumptions right now?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Manager.
I think I might can help with this. And to your point, the fire service fee is a fund unto itself.
Yes.
You will recall that the city commission adopted new rates. We're in the first year of a five-year period. When you establish those rates, they're intended to be adequate over a five-year period. There are assumptions in, in, in that, obviously, that include personnel cost increase, increases. The assumption was, and remains, 3% increase in personnel costs in each of the five years of that period. And so, that's how that structure was built, it's in place today. Next year will be the second year of a five-year period.
Thank you. That, that answers the question, Mr. Manager. And I think baked in with a 3% across-the-board assumption, when we're talking about 4.2% here, we're going to find ourselves searching for additional funds by the time those contracts are, are negotiated. So, I just want to bring that to awareness, that these tracks are in tandem. We have to be able to afford where we ended up, you know? We, we did frankly, a crazy thing this year, where we adopted a PVA contract with, with the budgetary implications unknown, which forces Commission San to raise taxes. And I don't want to make sure we're not on the, a trajectory to where we're, we're forced to raise taxes again, which I, I can't really say we were forced to, because we didn't look at...
Okay. I'm glad you corrected that, because we were not forced. We made a conscious decision to increase the millage rate to pay for those things that Robert outlined. Employee, police officer salaries, hiring additional police officers, and technology.
That's right.
We made that conscious decision to invest in public safety that way. We weren't forced to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We weren't forced. We made a decision to, or the majority made a decision to raise taxes, rather than looking for expenditure reduction. So, here's where I'm at today. And, you know, I've been coming here for six years. I've never seen my colleagues across the aisle express any meaningful desire to roll up their sleeves.
Which aisle is it?
To roll up their sleeves. Speaking, please.
Which aisle is it?
Let him finish, Mr. Williams Scotts.
I've never seen any desire to have any meaningful budget conversations at this table about reductions and savings and fiscal restraint at the city. Last year, we made several recommendations, including items that were funding right-wing blogs to attack city members of this body over, and that's on, on travel budgets, that's on food budgets. We need to put that all on the table. Those are significant expenditures in the city of Tallahassee. Departments like the Department of Strategic Innovation, you know, last year, the mayor came out very strongly for it, and, and that's okay, then let's show its worth. At least bring it back, and let's justify the expenditures that, that we're using, so we're having the conversations. Executive wages, again, 50, $100,000 increases, year after year after year. It adds up. It adds up to a tremendous amount of spending in the people in the bottom half of our organization, because we, we insist on across the board, rather than raising all ships in a way that people can afford to live, live in our community, just increases the income divide, not only in our city, but in our city, our city government, sponsorships, advertising, all of these things that are, are easy wages. Before we say we have a 3.8%, a $3.8 million budget deficit, bring us back a balanced budget, and then at the end of the budget cycle, show us what the surplus is and let us decide on, on that spending. So, I don't think it is fair to, 4.2% across the board, we should look at what that looks like for employees in a certain pay band, under 100, under 150, under 200. Let's see, see what those look like. So, so I'm going to make a motion that we bring back a budget at our next budget workshop for discussion that does not have a deficit and has a $4 million surplus. So, the direction will be to find $7.8 million in recommendations. And I've, I've been in government enough, when these things come back, you know, it'll be, you know, the things that the community wants the most. Oh, you're going to have to cut sidewalks, you're going to have to cut Star Metro services. Those things, I don't believe are true, but they can be included, as long as we look at some of the things I mentioned as well, and put it on the table, and see where we can find these savings. So, I move that we bring back a budget proposal that was balanced and a budget proposal that has a $4 million surplus for discussion.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. And first of all, thank you for getting us started and running the meeting today. You're doing a fine job. Apologize, I was running a couple of minutes late. Commissioner Matlow, you have been with us for six years, but clearly, you truly do not understand the budgetary process and how we go through this to form a budget, and that is on clear display today. Robert, you and your team are nationally award-winning for budget transparency and putting together a municipal budget, and for that, I thank you. Having the opportunity to work with you each and every day is a pleasure, and quite frankly, I am very proud of our budget office. And if it comes down to it, I do trust your math versus Commissioner Matlow's math, and I will continue to do so. The reason why we are at this point in the budget process is because we are still dealing with projections and not actuals coming from the property appraiser's office. And in fact, we won't know those actuals until July. This is my 16th local budget year of serving in office. We are in the same place, year after year after year. You have taken the direction from this commission on the level of service that we would like to provide, and quite frankly, I think is expected by the citizens of Tallahassee. Incredible level of service from every department that serves as this community. And so, yes, you have also taken our direction that there is not an interest in moving the millage rate this year, and that we are going to maintain the same millage rate. That is why we are where we are without the unknown variable, or without the known variable of what our actuals for property taxes will be. That will become apparent, we continue to move through this process. You all do an amazing job as we move through this process, bringing the gap between actuals and projected together, bringing us to a balanced budget. And in fact, we will have a balanced budget, and I believe a balanced budget with an incredible level of service, without moving the millage rate by the time it is appropriate to adopt. So, I would like to make a substitute motion for option number one and option number two, to be able to move forward with this process, and let's let our nationally award-recognized, winning team do their job and bring us back an incredible budget for adoption at the end of this fiscal year.
I would second that motion.
Substitute motion made by the mayor, seconded by Commissioner Williams Scotts. Any discussion on the substitute motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Pointing out that we do have a speaker on the budget. So, before you take a final action on either of those motions, let me know, and we'll take the speaker.
Okay. Let's go ahead and hear from the speaker.
Thank you. We do have one speaker on the item, Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims?
Mr. Mayor Protem, that's the only speaker I have at this time, so when he's concluded, you'll have it back.
All right. Mr. Sims, you have three minutes.
My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. Then allow me to go to some hot items that comes from the general budget. Mr. Mayor, today, a couple of days ago, I talked about the double salary Bob and Weave program, where the city of Tampa turned down the opportunity where their chief of police would be making just as much or more than their city manager. Well, we have three employees that are currently making more than our city manager with the Bob and Weave program. It's not hard to find a HR director. It is if you've got one that you need specially groomed, that will carry through your hidden agendas. It's not hard to find a police chief that will tolerate the level of violence that we citizens are tolerating with an 8.5% tax increase. And your renowned budget crew, under the great leadership of our assistant manager, who received a $60,000 raise, 60. Google don't get those type raises. And in a two-year period, we're talking at allegedly maybe 110. And then, let's look at this, because my wife is a city employee. She loves that buyback program. She loves that buyback program. Let's cap it, if you make more than $125,000, you're ineligible for it. Let's keep those kind of saving programs for those low-end people. My son, six-year employee Mr. Matlow, with the city of Tallahassee, yeah, making $17 an hour. Why? Because he's been strategically placed out. I think I just come up about $3 million right there. And then, if we don't do that, let's recommend what looks like a 5% reduction in salary and a deletion of one assistant city manager that's making $247,000 a year that can sit up there in that box over there and correct my English?
You're at two and a half minutes.
And then, we can look at Wayne Tetter, who doesn't have a law degree, is the primary reason that we don't even have our who? The number seven city attorney in the nation, after those text messages, could not stand to be here with your awarding transparent team that puts $70 million in a group thing instead of breaking it all out.
All right, Mr. Sims.
And we find it hilarious.
Thank you.
I was just being disrespected by your mayor and by your city manager while I was speaking, they were laughing.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. You're at three minutes. Any other speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. There is a substitute motion by the mayor, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Mr. Commissioner Porter, and then Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protem, I just have one question and then brief comments. Was there any, I didn't see any mention of an allocation for the bicentennial park. Is there, has that been considered at this point?
Yes. In 2022, we set aside dollars to address bicentennial celebration, and we began with $50,000, $50,000, and then another $50,000 over three years to establish monies for the city for bicentennial celebrations. And then, also, I believe, most requests for bicentennial celebration activities are going through the, I'm sorry.
Tourist development.
Tourist development, yes.
But for the park in particular?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Manager?
I believe, and Robert has done a good job on the operating piece. The park is being envisioned today, and that would be incorporated in our capital improvement plan. So as we get a little more information, we'll do that. I would expect that to come back to the commission as well. So that would be separate and apart from the celebrations and the activities related to the bicentennial this year.
Okay. And that would be worked into our 25?
Yes, sir.
Budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, just a few brief comments. I just want to say, you know, you are doing your job, we are doing ours, we are a policy-setting board. I would like, I disagree that my colleague doesn't know how the budget process works. There's a lot of different approaches to budget. There's base budgeting, there's zero base budgeting, there's fixed ceiling budgeting, program budget. There's a million different ways to approach a budget at the municipal level. I'm not even, I'm not talking about a personal budget. I think having these conversations, this is the forum, to have them, we can disagree, but I think I always preach about how I want to see options and alternatives. The majority will give its direction, and that'll be that. But I don't think it's inappropriate at all to talk about alternatives, to talk about options. There are competing priorities in the public. We know that, and I really would like to see a time where having a different point of view, or disagreeing, or asking questions, isn't twisted into something personal, because it really has nothing to do with that, and I think you know that. But I always want to clarify, and just for the record, no matter how we move forward, I think I mentioned some of these priorities when we last met, but I want to express where I'm coming from, and I would like to see more support for code enforcement. We know this is a problem that contributes to our affordable housing crisis. I would like to see in the discussion that we have moving forward with the CSC and CHSP funding, that we increase that funding in certain categories. I know housing is a priority for us, and I think we need to invest even more as we leverage funding from other sources. Part of that would be establishing a right-to-counsel program and funding it. That's another really effective and lower-cost way than building houses or rehousing people to keep people in their homes. We've talked about increasing infrastructure for pedestrian safety, for cyclist safety. Some of these things, that in particular, are part of plans that we have for infrastructure, but there are other parts of town where we have that, and we can do more to invest in that. We're seeing cyclists being hit, pedestrians being hit. No one wants that. That's something that is a priority for me. We've had a discussion at the City Commission about what it would look like to provide childcare to the city. That's something that should be coming back to us and should be part of this discussion as we move forward. And I would support having a discussion about limiting salary increases at certain levels for people who make over a certain amount, and discussions about nonessential government services. I think that's a totally appropriate conversation to have that we've had before, this is the forum to have it, and when we have options, that's how we move forward and reach consensus. So that's where I'm at today. I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Matlow, and then Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, and thank you, Commissioner Porter, for always bringing real actionable items for us to discuss at budget workshops. I'm offended but not surprised by the grade-school insults thrown by the mayor about mathematical abilities. I don't believe anybody's math has been in question here at all. In fact, what is in question is how we direct our priorities to our budget staff. When they provide the numbers, they're accurate, and the numbers right now say, based on our direction, we're at a $3.8 million budget deficit. And I think it's reasonable for the elected body to have that discussion of what's driving those deficits, where we can find cuts in savings. I recognize I'm in a minority that wants to rein in the spending at City Hall, but I don't think personal insults are going to move us in a positive direction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry. Commissioner Williams Cox, and then we'll come back to you.
Okay. I want to just chime in, just say a couple of brief things. One, the time to discuss budget alternatives is not while we're in the middle of the budget year and cycle. If we're interested in using a different budgeting method, then that needs to occur years prior to us doing what we're doing, because what you're, and I'm looking at you guys, what you guys are basing your budget on, having worked in the state government and dealt with budgets, what you're dealing with is not today. You're dealing with what you've been working on for a period of time to get to this point and where you're going forward. A methodology has been adopted, even prior to us coming to this commission, there's been a methodology adopted for how we do this budget process, and it works, because at the end, we have a balanced budget. And when something is, my daddy was a football coach, and he used to say, "You run the ball until somebody stops it." So what has happened is that you have run the ball year in, year out, and at the end, we score, and we're able to continue to do this. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. I think that also, it is unfair for the public to continue to watch what we're doing here sometimes. It's confusing enough as it is. You've provided us with clear information, it's been out there enough for folks to be able to review it and ask questions if they need it to. But I think it is unfair for us to come in, some of us to come in and throw innuendos and leave them hanging out there.
Correct.
The four-point, what is the county proposing for their employees across the board?
I believe they've recommended 5%.
Exactly. We're living in a city where we're competing for top-quality employees, management, law enforcement, firefighters, whomever. We want to make sure that the city of Tallahassee has the best, because we have the most coverage. We have the greatest risk. People go to college and get degrees in doing these things because they're expecting to be paid for the work that they bring, that they provide. And so I think that it is, I'm insulted from time to time when people think that the work that folks do day in and day out is so minimal that you can decrease what it's worth. As a city commissioner, I'm making less than $25 an hour doing this, but I signed up for this. I chose to do that. And in many jobs, people signed up, signed up to do this based on what they understood the job was going to be and understood what it was going to pay, as well as the opportunity to do something else. So, you know, I'm just saying what I'm saying. It is unfair for the public to have to listen to this back and forth that takes place when it's not necessary. We're here to deal with the budget, where we are now, and Robert, you and your team have told us, there's some lagging indicators. You've told us where the pressure points are. This is where we start every year at a deficit at this point in time, because there are some things that we're going to learn as we go through the year, there's some revenue that we're going to realize. And I think that it is unfair for us to sit here and talk about that we're at, that providing raises is going to cause a deficit. That is not true. By the end of this cycle, we will balance this budget because we're required to do so, and we're not going to do it on the back of our general employees. I've always been a proponent for all of our employees, but our general employees are not protected by a labor union agreement. And so we have to make sure that we do what we need to do to make sure that general employees are covered. And I just wanted to be very clear that this commissioner has a full grasp and knowledge of what we're doing here today. And I'm not saying anything about anybody else, I'm just saying, I am doing what I need to do, and I'm not across the aisle. Last I checked, we're all in nonpartisan seats. I'm representing everybody in the city of Tallahassee. That's my job, I take it very seriously. And I don't appreciate the back and forth, that we as adults don't need to do that. We're not setting good examples with our children when we do this. We're here to discuss this budget. If we have suggestions for how things can change, and we need to do it differently or whatever, I'm open to that. But it's not for me to hear, talk to the city manager, talk to the budget staff, but don't wait until the day of the, we're here to lay out where we are to talk about changing the budget, to change our methodology for the budget, because that's not going to work in this budget cycle, because it is a cycle. This is our second look at this budget. Now, this is not the time to change it. If we're going to change it, then let's get ahead of it for the next time to change it. I'm not opposed to that, but be careful what you ask for, because what we're doing works. And if it's working, don't fix, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
No, the political hypocrisy is too deep on that, and I call the question. Let's get to the vote.
Okay. But before we get to that, before I recognize that, Mr. Mayor, I did want to make a couple of comments. You know, this thing about a majority, the majority, my colleagues across the aisle.
Right.
I have served on three, in three different collegial bodies. As a school board member, as a state legislator, and now 10 years on this city commission, I have never, ever been part of a majority. I vote on issues that I feel are in the best interest of this community that I've lived in for 50 years and been a part of actively, politically and non-politically. That's how I vote, based on those issues. If someone disagrees with me, then we disagree. If there is a majority vote, that's what we have to have to move this city forward. And that's how I determine how I vote. I've had conversations recently with reporters to tell them, I'm not part of any majority. We don't have discussions about issues because we can't outside of the sunshine. And so that doesn't happen. When we come to this body as a commission, and we hear the issues brought before us and the recommendations made by the city manager, that's how I determine what my vote is going to be. And that is what's in the best interest of the city of Tallahassee and her residents and visitors. So I want to dispel this notion that there is some established voting bloc. If you look at the votes that we have taken as a commission, I would suspect that probably 90% of those are unanimous votes by this commission. Now, is that a bloc? Is that a, colleagues on the other side of the aisle? No. It's how we feel about representing the citizens of this community on those particular issues. And so, again, I just want to dispel that whole notion of some voting bloc where it appears we discuss issues before we come to the commission, that there is no truth to that whatsoever. And I would hope that as a collegial body, we would refrain from making those kinds of statements and accusations. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just want to make a clarification that I was not suggesting, I don't think anyone was suggesting we change the methodology that we use to establish our budget. I was merely pointing out there are different ways that people do budgets. And then, you know, I'm reading from my notes from the last three budgets workshops, so I've been consistent in what have been my priorities, and so I agree. You know, now is the time, and I have those conversations with staff as well. But I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't advocating that we adopt a different kind of budgeting process. I just was making a point about the options that people do use. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Just quickly on point, thank you, Commissioner Porter, for that clarification, but you may not have, but there was a suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
All right. So there is a substitute motion by the mayor to accept options one and two. There's a second to that substitute motion by Commissioner Williams Cox. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like sign.
Nay.
The motion carries 3-2 by those people who agree with the options and recommendations made by our budget staff. Okay. We will conclude the budget. Mr. City Manager, was there anything else that we need to address during the budget hearing?
No, sir. That satisfies the budget item.
All right. Well, we will adjourn the budget.
Mr. Mayor Protem, are we not discussing the strategic plan update?
Yes, sir. That would be the second item in the workshop. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. The budget is.
I apologize for that.
You have taken all the action necessary on the budget item. The second item on the workshop today is a strategic plan update, and that will be led by Dr. Whitley and his team. If you give us just a brief second, we're going to change out, and we'll dive in. We know we're up against a 3 o'clock start time for our regular city commission meeting. If you will indulge us, we'll need just a little bit of time to break the tables down. So we'll move quickly through this presentation.
Dr. Whitley, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. We do have a brief update on the strategic plan here this afternoon, and much like the budget item, where we had a Q2 update and then also looking forward to FY '25, we've got a bit of a look back on the 2020 to 2024 strategic plan, as well as an update on where we go forward over the next five years. I will tell you, and this isn't anything that you don't already know, that this strategic plan is unlike a lot of other strategic plans that you may have been involved with with other organizations. It is both an internal organizational plan and an external community-focused plan, which makes it a complicated plan. But you all provided significant leadership on that, and I think we've seen the results of that. This is a model plan. It's been recognized by the ICMA with the Certificate of Achievement and Performance Management. And I will tell you, in my experience talking to colleagues across the country, to other cities, this is a plan they look to. They see us as light-years ahead of what a lot of other cities are doing in the framework of the plan, in the targets, and particularly in our achievement of those targets. So we'll go through some of that today. The strategic plan framework, you'll be familiar with, where we have our priority areas, and then that drills down kind of each subsequent step to our goals and objectives, and then our metrics or our targets, and individual measure that we look at. And as we talk about the next five years, we've got a process to do that, and I think it's important. it's important, talking about the plan that we've been under for almost the last five years now, that we have a solid foundation and a solid framework. So this is very intentionally an update, a 2.0, if you will, not an overhaul of the plan. And you'll see that, you've seen that already in the agenda item, and you'll see that as we go through here this afternoon. And we have a 10-step process that we've outlined in the item that me and my team and of course, staff from across the organization have been involved in for quite some time now. I've got my strategic innovation consultants here with me today. They've been heavily involved in this for some time, and this 10-step plan that we put together has been guiding our process and will continue to guide our process as we update the strategic plan for the next five years, in hopes that we'll be anticipating emerging challenges, we'll be aligning our organizational priorities, and we'll be enabling the city to remain the national leader in the delivery of public service. As you know, what our plan does as often as we can is it benchmarks our performance, our achievement against others. We do that often against ourselves, we do that against other cities, and I like to do that against organizations, other companies. And so what we've seen in looking at this is that a survey of large companies was done, and only 12% of those companies are successful in achieving more than half of their goals when they undertake something on the level of a strategic plan. With your guidance and leadership, when we come to the end of this five-year plan, we will have achieved at least 90% of the goals, strategic targets that you have set. I think we should be. I know that you're proud of that. We wouldn't expect 100%. 100% would tell us that we did not set our goals lofty enough, but I don't think anybody around this table would be satisfied if that were, say, 50% of the targets that we'd achieved over the past five years. So the first step is doing some analysis of the 2020 to 2024 plan. And so a couple individual targets that we drew out in the agenda item that are worth, I think, talking about here today. The number of jobs added to the economy annually, we set a goal of 2,500 jobs annually, and since fiscal year 2019, we've added more than 15,000 net new jobs in Tallahassee, and that includes the COVID pandemic job losses that we have. So not only have we continued the trend of adding jobs, we've made up those jobs and continued with 15,000, more than 15,000 net new jobs. And then you also see on there, one of the ways that, an important measure of our economy is GDP. The goal was to have a $15 billion economy in 2017, chain dollars, and in fiscal year '22, which is the last year for which a full GDP data is available, that was $19.2 billion. And so what that means is over the past five years, we've seen our local economy here grow nearly 25%. And I think we all understand what that means for job opportunities and the like that influence a lot of the other areas of our strategic plan. Related to that is the commission's decision to make the airport a kind of, a different priority than maybe it had been in the past, but putting significant emphasis on the airport, setting a $1 billion annual economic impact target there. You see where that's going. This is a story that we're familiar with. What's not shown on the screen there, frankly, because we didn't really have enough space, but is to show where we were in 2014, which was a $399 million annual economic impact. When that was measured five years later, which is the timeframe that this is measured, it had grown by 50% to $599 million. In 2023, it was $859 million. So we believe in that trajectory, believe that we're on the path to reach a billion-dollar annual economic impact by the end of this plan horizon. And I will note that that does not include the economic impact from the International Processing Facility or the Foreign Trade Zone, which at full maturity, we expect the Foreign Trade Zone to create an additional 1,600 jobs and generate an additional $300 million annual economic impact. And so if you're doing the math, what that will tell you is that our airport represents nearly 5% of our local economy. So it's a significant local and regional driver in our economy. We also have goals for homes rehabilitated and/or that have received emergency repairs. We set that target at 425. Through FY '23, we've actually accomplished 1,047 of those. And then similarly, down payment assistance grants that have been awarded set a target at 125, and we've doubled that to 250. So working both to get people into homes that are new to them and to keep people in their homes through rehab and repair. One of the other things that is, that you've made a significant priority, and that's, and I can tell you that that's being echoed by the leadership team, the directors all across the organization, is bringing in our fair share of the money to Tallahassee. This is from the state, but also from the federal level. And so we set a goal to increase the grants that we received annually by 5%. You can see where we were in 2019, and you can see we've blown that out of the water. We do know that some of those were one-time ARPA funds in '21, but you can see we're above the trend line in '22 and significantly above it in '23. You'll note firsthand that some of the successes we had in '23 included a $20 million loan no grant for electrification of our Star Metro fleet, a $15 million raise grant for the South Side Transit Center, and a $1 million state legislative appropriation for the South Side Transit Center as well. That barely scratches the surface. You'll know that once Congress got their act together and actually passed their FY ' '24 budget six months late, that included in it a $2.7 million appropriation for the airport, again, through the community project funding request that was supported by Congressman Dunn. So that grant number continues to grow. We also have targets and initiatives in the strategic plan that are not numbers-based, that we're not measuring that way, but we're measuring a project that we want to complete. And then the FAMU extension was one of those, that the target was to complete it by 2024. We did that three years early. It is, I think it's safe to say, one of the best roads in Tallahassee, one of the most beautiful roads, provides a great connection between our campuses and a great entry into We set a goal for community-oriented policing activities held annually by TPD at 35. They took that and didn't say, we're going to do one better, or two better, or three better. They jumped from the 35, they did 78 in fiscal year '20, and in fiscal year '23, they did 491. And so I think that speaks to the emphasis that, and the leadership that you have a commission, as a commission have provided on that front. Similarly, we had an initiative to implement data sharing with local law enforcement partners. You know that this happens regularly, but a significant step and advancement in this was the opening of the Real-Time Crime Center in conjunction with Leon County Sheriff's Office and FSU PD. That's been very successful already in working with these partner agencies in solving shootings, homicides, SWATting calls, and the recovery of more than 120 stolen vehicles to date. One of my personal favorite targets that we have in the strategic plan is a goal to have 100 parks by our 200th anniversary. That's this year. You're familiar with the map on the left-hand side. All the green emblems there are city parks. I think that's significant. We've all, most of us have lived other places, have traveled to other places, and so we know the value of the public parks, and those, the parks that are on that map do not include our trails and other green spaces either. So we know that it's significantly more. We know the public health benefits to access to open and green space, which is why we have another target that is, number of our residents live within a 10-minute walk to a park, and that stands right now at 92%. As we are analyzing the 2020 to 2024 plan, what we've also focused on is what lessons have we learned? And so as we've outlined, we know that some of these targets have external factors that impact them. Violent crime is one of those. Doesn't mean that we can't do anything about it. Y'all have taken action on that in particular, as you discussed earlier. We know that in some of these cases, we took a long, hard look at what would be the most fiscally responsible thing to do with the target. The CAPRA accreditation initiative that was in the strategic plan for our Parks and Rec system, we determined that it was a better use of our funds to put that money into our park system and activating those and building new parks than to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars to get an accreditation when we already know that we're one of the best, not the best park system in the nation. And then we know that we set ambitious goals. We intentionally set lofty stretch goals to make them hard. Some of them we surpassed, probably even surprised ourselves more quickly than we anticipated. Some of them we continue to work toward. One of those is our on-time transit performance with Star Metro. 80% is a fantastic number for on-time performance. We set the goal at 90%, and we're at 85%. So we're going to continue working on that. Obviously, the South Side Transit Center and the investments that are being made there will have an impact on that target as well. The second step is reviewing our mission, vision, and values. As you know, in 2019, there was a working group that was put together that comprised community members and staff, and put these together, and these continue to be timely, and they continue to be important for how we develop and implement workplace culture. We believe, as you do, they should be known, understood, and embraced by every member of our organization. I will tell you that these are talked about at every single new employee orientation that we have and regularly throughout the organization. So the mission, vision, and values will remain guiding principles as we prepare an update to the plan for 2025 to 2029. We continue to look at our strengths and opportunities. I think we're, at this point, familiar with them, but the team nonetheless reviewed, you know, did an updated SWAT analysis, and we see a lot of similarities of what we saw in 2019. What our citizens continue to say, what you continue to hear are the strengths that we have, our park system, our green space, our public utilities, our environmental and family friendliness as an organization and as a community. We also see the airport increasing as a strength that we have and the diverse job creation as well. Opportunities will be no surprise to you. They continue to be public safety, economic development, and affordable housing. These continue to be the priorities that you've made clear, and I will tell you that what's important to me and my team and to the rest of the organization is that as we work to update the plan for the next five years, that the priorities that you've made clear over the lifespan of this plan are, remain at the forefront, and we believe that that's happening, and those will continue to guide us as we update the plan going forward. We have seven priority areas, which you're familiar with, economic development, impact on poverty, organizational effectiveness, public infrastructure, public safety, public trust, and quality of life. These are the priority areas that serve as the focal points for our objectives and metrics, the large umbrellas, if you will, that reflect the primary needs of our community, and also at the same time encompassing the breadth of the city services that we provide. So you know that when the plan was first put together, we did a meta-analysis of 45 different plans and brought them together in the strategic plan, and of course, you had a significant leadership role in that and developing these priority areas. And like the mission, vision, and values, we believe that they continue to align well with one another and to be timely and relevant to the organization and to the needs and the desires of the community. But with those 45 plans that we incorporated into this plan, y'all have not just been sitting by, as you know better than anybody, for the last few years. You have new plans that you've adopted since then, two of the most significant ones being the South Side Action Plan and the Clean Energy Plan. And so one of the steps in the process of updating the plan for the next five years is to integrate these into the strategic plan, to put them in this kind of overarching organizational community plan to make sure that they are, that they are tracked the same way, they are given the same amount of prominence, and that we continue to put the appropriate resources toward them. So these plans will be working toward integrating them to a significant degree into the overarching strategic plan. The next step is to craft the objectives, the targets, the initiatives. This is a process that's ongoing. I will tell you that, and I think we can probably freely say that this has been happening for five years. Every year, every single department gets together, meets with the E-team, the executive team, and talks about the progress that they're making toward the targets. This is a priority of ours, making sure that we're staying on track, as you know, but also talking about what that's meant for the departments, how that's aligned their priorities and their use of resources, and how they're thinking toward the next plan. And I can tell you that departments have had ideas about new objectives, targets, and initiatives pretty much since this initial plan was created. And so that's been ongoing, but more intensely since then. Me and my team have met with every single department, we started probably six months ago, talking specifically with them about targets that have been assigned to them, that they have ownership for, you know, how do they think they've been performing? How do they think those targets have served them and their department as they're the subject matter experts, and what ideas that they have for potential new targets? So we are, we continue to be in the process of that. That's an ongoing process. We're relying on our subject matter experts in these areas to bring updates to targets to us and also to bring potential new targets. And so on this 10-step plan, what you can see is that we're about halfway through it. There's a lot of work that's, as you would expect, that's been happening. We didn't wait until today to start thinking about the next five-year plan, just like you haven't. And there's a lot of work that remains ahead of us. We're confident that we'll get there, and if we look at the timeline, you can, you can see kind of how this project is laid out and where we anticipate adoption in the fall. The, we're married with the budget in today's workshop, and that would be our recommendation moving forward in June, and that's part of our recommended action because we see a lot of symmetry between the budget and the strategic plan. I think that makes a lot of sense to all of us. And so our hope would be that we'll continue to get feedback and direction from you, we'll continue to work with our departments, and we'll work toward adoption of this in the fall around the time, if not just right after, you adopt the budget. So hopefully, I haven't taken up too much of the time. I know y'all may have discussion or questions, we're here for that, but appreciate the opportunity to share with you today.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. Let's open it up for discussion. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you tell me a little bit more about the SWAT analysis? Like, is that a document that we can look at? Was that just open discussion?
That's a great question. We don't have a single document. Of course, we've looked back at the work that was done in 2019, the community surveys and things of that that played into it. We've looked at prior commission direction and the priorities that have been set by the commission. And of course, I mean, I think y'all are well-equipped to determine our opportunity areas. That's important to us. The opportunity areas, the priorities that y'all have set and made clear over the past few years, both in the budget and throughout your commission year. So there's not one particular document, but it's looking at, obviously, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. There's some update, but as we would expect, and we've gone back to similar analyses that were done 10, 15, 20 years before, and there's a high degree of consistency.
Thank you. Is there, were you planning on, I think according to the item, you're only recommending, at least at this point, the one workshop before adoption, which would take place in the fall, I believe the item says. Is that all you're anticipating? And I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, to have the workshop, I haven't had the opportunity to be really engaged with the strategic plan because I hadn't, wasn't on the commission at the time. I would like to have been more involved even up to this point. I think we've done really good work, and I feel like I would like an additional workshop before we adopt it. That's something we can discuss, but I would like the opportunity to dig in a little bit more. I know that a lot of our directives, objectives are ones that we want to improve upon and keep. I know we're not throwing everything out, and I'm not suggesting we do, but I haven't felt included in this process and would like to give more input. And I feel like a single workshop, especially if it's coupled with a budget workshop and then a commission meeting later, might not give us enough time. a budget workshop and then a commission meeting later, might not give us enough time to really dig in. And so I, I would like to see if, you know, if there's an openness. We don't need to vote on this now, but maybe after the June workshop, after our summer break. I don't know how the timeline works, but I would like the opportunity to have a more in-depth discussion personally. But I'm, you know, I would make the, a motion that we accept option one.
Motion on table made by Commissioner Porter. Is there a second to the motion?
Again.
Second by the Mayor Protem. Further discussion.
Well, I want to take a second and thank you, gentlemen. Monte, Brian, Matthew, I enjoy working with you each and every day. I think you all are amazing, and I try to tell you that every day. I travel across this country, and I talk to other mayors, and they are absolutely amazed, Dr. Whitley, that we have a department with this type of firepower that is so forward-focused, cross-departments, throughout the entire city, to tackle not only those challenges that we face as a community, but what are those big ideas? And I think it's absolutely amazing. I'm proud, under the leadership of the manager, that we took this step and we created this department, to have a department that is solely focused on our strategic plan, move this community forward, which is now nationally recognized for its excellence as well, is second to none. I want to state for the record, I know Commissioner Matlow has mentioned that you all should be disbanded, the entire department. I strongly support this department and the work that y'all do. With that, we stand adjourned.
We need a vote.
I took the vote. All those in favor of the vote?
Aye.
Motion on the table, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
All those pose. Passes unanimously, 5-0. We stand adjourned until 3 o'clock.
Thank you, guys. Y'all.
Yeah.